Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025 council meeting. I'd like to call that to order, and Councilmember Stuart Jacobson will lead us with an invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us take a moment to pause and reflect. As we gather here today to serve the people of Sugar Land, we are reminded of the great responsibility we bear as leaders of the community. We are thankful for the privilege to lead and make decisions that will shape the future of our city. We ask for guidance, wisdom, and clarity in all our deliberations tonight. May we lead with humility, fairness, and compassion, always striving to uplift the lives of those we represent. Help us to work together in unity, setting aside personal differences for the greater good of the community. At this time, we also pause to give thanks for the dedicated men and women who serve as first responders in our city, our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and emergency personnel such as Public Works people who keep us warm and safe when everybody else is tucked into their beds. We are grateful for their selflessness, courage, and unwavering commitment. Let us be ever mindful of the trust placed in us by our fellow citizens and strive to make decisions that reflect the values of justice, integrity, and service. May this meeting strengthen our resolve to foster a safe, prosperous, and united Sugar Land. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacobson. Next, we have Troop 19444A, the Ismaili Girl Scouts. Come on down, ladies, and they're going to be leading our pledges tonight. Yes, we've got Isa, Alima, Alyssa, Aria, Ikra, Iraha, Isna, Isha, Monha, Nazaha, Safa, Salwa, Sarah, Serena, Serena, Shania, Sifwat, Uzma, Zaira, Ziana, and Zoya. And the troop leaders are Salima Manjani and Salima Magani. And we have Serena Magani and Ziana Manjani, who are going to lead us in the pledges. Ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. And if any parents would like to take pictures, and Council, why don't you just stay up there? And if any parents would like to take some pictures, or the city staff, let's grab a few pictures here. Oh, I don't want to block anybody's. I'll just... Thank you all for coming again tonight. I appreciate it. I was a Girl Scout for 11 years, so you never know where Girl Scouts are going to take you. So... Next, item five, recognition. We have the Scenic City Platinum Certification Award. So Henry Vavrika, the right-of-way service manager, is going to address this item for us. So please come forward, Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. The Scenic City Certification, Platinum Certification, is a new certification this year for the city of Sugar Land. Previous to that, we were gold level. I think that was attained back in 2020. It's a five-year term, and you recertify every five years. But platinum level is the highest you can go. So with that, I would like to say that this is a culmination of several departments' hard work. And I wanted to recognize those folks. And we have Public Works, we have Code Enforcement, we have Parks, Planning, Economic Development, Redevelopment, Engineering, SL4B and SLDC Corp. All of these folks contribute to projects that we are able to do and complete everything that makes the city look good. So I thank you all for being a part of this. And Code Enforcement, Scenic City is really... Scenic, the certification is really all about city ordinances. So, you know, having the strong ordinances that we have and enforcing those ordinances, it enhances public spaces, manages assignments thoughtfully, protects trees, green spaces, and encourages design that elevates community quality of life. Together, we are shaping a city that values progress and preservation equally, a city that looks as good as it feels to live in. So the Platinum City Certification is about accomplishment, not just of awards, but of leadership, vision, and the collective commitment we share in making Sugar Land a community that is more beautiful, sustainable, and an inspiring place to live. Each of us here represents a city that has chosen to invest in scenic conservation, thoughtful planning, and community pride. We understand that scenic beauty is more than just what we see. It's the character of a place, the sense of belonging it creates, and the legacy it builds for generations to come. Thank you.
Well, would everybody who's involved with our Platinum City Scenic Award, please come up for a picture? Who else hear from that? Come on down. This is really great. Platinum Scenic City, the highest level. So congratulations to all involved. Thank you for your hard work on this. Council, do you want to come down? Do you want to stay up? Cut the cake. Next item is 5B. Shayla Lee, International City County Management Association Early Career Leadership Award in memory of William H. Hansel Jr. And Michelle McCrimmon, our Assistant City Manager, is going to start off this item.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mike, distinguished guests, city staff. I am so proud to recognize Shayla Lee as the recipient of the ICMA Early Career Leadership Award in memory of William H. Hansel Jr. ICMA is the International City County Manager Association, and this award honors an exceptional early-career local government professional who demonstrates leadership, competency, and a deep commitment to public service. And Shayla exemplifies all of these qualities. The recognition also featured Shayla on the October cover... Yes. A public management magazine. It reaches more than 13,000 ICMA members. And Shayla was also recognized at the ICMA conference with more than 5,200 attendees. Shayla began her career in Sugar Land as a management analyst in the Data and Innovation Department, quickly standing out as an innovative problem solver. She advanced to Assistant to the City Manager, and now serves as a Director of the Strategic and Government Affairs Department, where she's guided major citywide initiatives, strengthened data-driven governance, and elevated our strategic planning efforts. Her leadership has fostered collaboration across departments, enhanced relationships with city council, community partners, Fort Bend ISD, and strengthened our management analyst program. Shayla also helped to found the City Care Club, which supports employees and builds a culture of care across the organization. Shayla's management style is based on three core principles: encouraging innovation, prioritizing mentorship and development, and building a culture of accountability and engagement. And these values are present in all of her work and help her to succeed in her daily operations. So please join me in congratulating Shayla on this incredible accomplishment.
Oh, okay. This is absolutely huge. Shayla is the worldwide recipient of this award, and we are so fortunate to have her here in Sugar Land. So yay! Yes. And so I would like to present you with a proclamation in recognition of your distinguished leadership, exemplary public service, and enduring contributions to the advancement of our community. Shayla Lee has demonstrated exceptional dedication to the city of Sugar Land, rising swiftly through the organization through her vision, integrity, and unwavering commitment to excellence. From her early service as a management analyst to her role as Director of Strategic and Government Affairs, she has consistently embodied the highest standards of professionalism and public stewardship. Guided by insight and innovation, Shayla led the development and implementation of Sugar Land's 2025 to 2027 Strategic Action Plan, ensuring that the city's direction reflects the voices, priorities, and aspirations of our community. Her thoughtful leadership has strengthened citywide collaboration, enhanced operational efficiency, and positioned Sugar Land as a leader in strategic and data-informed governance. During her tenure, Shayla has provided steady and strategic direction through major organizational transformations, including the unification of the Strategic and Government Affairs and Data and Innovation Departments. She has built strong and trusted relations with city council, executive leadership, regional partners, and local schools, while championing professional development and expanding opportunities for emerging public sector leaders. Additionally, her role as a founding member of the City Care Club has enriched workplace culture by fostering compassion, unity, and support among employees. Through her leadership, marked by empowerment, collaboration, and a steadfast dedication to continuous improvement, Shayla has enriched the culture of the organization and strengthened the city of Sugar Land's capacity to serve its residents with excellence. Thank you again, and congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Council, and Mike, for you guys' support and this recognition. I also want to say, most importantly, thank you to my team, most of which are here today. Without you guys' support and confidence, Emmy Awards like these would not be possible. So I appreciate all of you. They wanted me to shout you out, but it's too many of you. Love you guys.
Council, if you could come down for a picture, if you may, maybe. So after all that excitement, okay, item number six, public comment. At this time, we'll open public comment. Citizens who wish to address the city council regarding action items on the agenda for consideration will have three minutes to speak. Please come forward when I call your name. Our first speaker is Cora and Duncan Cox, speaking on item 9B.
Good evening, Mayor McCutcheon, members of the city council, and everyone here tonight. My name is Cora Cox, and I'm in eighth grade at Logos Preparatory Academy. This is my brother Duncan. He is a seventh grader at Logos. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. We're here because Logos Prep is trying to build a permanent campus in Sugar Land, and we really want you all to accept it. Say yes to building our campus. First, we want to tell you why we love our school so much. We have been at Logos Prep for six years, and it has become such an important part of our lives. We feel at home there, and everyone at school feels like an extension of our family. Teachers know us by name. They pray with us when we are stressed about a test. They celebrate with us when we begin to understand something hard.
Logos challenges me. At school, we read real books, write informative papers, give speeches, play sports, and put on plays. We've learned time management skills and have been held responsible for the grades we've earned. But everything we do points back to loving God and loving people. And that's why even on tough days, we still want to be there. It's a home filled with people who want the same things we want. Now let me tell you why we are so excited about the idea of Logos having its own campus in Sugar Land. The new campus is going to be amazing. Right now, our school exists in rented spaces. And while these spaces have served us well, and we will always remember what they did to help our school grow, we want more now. We want our teachers to have classrooms that belong to them so that they can make them their own. We are excited this campus will have real science labs, a gym for volleyball and basketball games, a baseball field, and green space where we can eat our lunch outside.
This campus will also allow us to grow our school. There are so many families in Sugar Land and surrounding neighborhoods who want what Logos offers. With the new campus, we can welcome more kids and keep families together from kindergarten all the way up to senior year. Finally, we hope you'll support bringing this campus to Sugar Land because it is good for our city. Logos families live in Sugar Land. We go to church here. We shop here. We serve here. We grew up here. When the new campus is built, even more families who love Sugar Land will move here or stay here because they want their kids to go to school that teaches truth, kindness, and excellence. Please vote to allow Logos Prep to start building us a permanent home where we can keep doing what we do best, growing our families, and making an impact for Christ.
So on behalf of all the Logos students, the kindergartners who just started, the seniors who will graduate this year, and everyone in between, we're asking you to please approve the new Logos Preparatory Academy campus. Sugar Land is already a great place to grow up, but with Logos here for good, it will be even better.
Thank you for listening, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Cora and Duncan. Our next speaker is Taylor Gibbs.
Good evening, city council, mayor, and guests. My name is Taylor, and I have been attending Logos Prep since third grade. I also have two siblings who attend Logos, a brother in eighth grade and a little sister in sixth grade. I love Logos, and I'm looking forward to seeing it continue to grow roots in Sugar Land. I believe Logos should remain in Sugar Land for three reasons. One, the location. Two, the Sugar Land community. And three, our blessing to Sugar Land. One of the reasons why my family and many of others have chosen Logos as their home is not just because of its welcoming community, stimulating environment, and strong values and beliefs, but is also because of the location. Sugar Land serves as a midpoint for many of our families. Most of the students and their parents are willing to drive the distance to Logos because it is a central and accessible city like Sugar Land. But beyond convenience, Sugar Land offers a family-oriented environment where students feel safe. Logos students feel comfortable going out to lunch because Logos provides a secure environment with the welcoming and nice people at nearby businesses and restaurants. Sugar Land's community deeply aligns with Logos Prep's mission and values. The relationships we build, the services we provide, and the character we develop are all strengthened by the environment we're surrounded by. This city has supported our school for years, and in return, our students grow up, contributing positively back into this community. At our school, our students strive to be lights, and we want our community to benefit. In fact, three of our core values for a student are family, integrity, and faith. Communities are known to be strengthened when they are filled with families who value integrity and uphold strong family bonds. Our outreach programs already serve nearby communities. For example, doing things like trash cleanup, food drives, and creating a more positive environment. It's something we gladly do. In fact, we already volunteer at the Landon Ridge, Sugar Land Assistant Living, and Member Care off of Brook Street, and we spend the holidays there with residents. I myself, in third grade, actually came down to the place, and I wrote holiday cards for the residents, and I got to spend time with them, which is really meaningful and impactful for me. And we still continue to serve there. Our Chick-fil-A leadership organization was just down there. Keeping Logos in Sugar Land doesn't just preserve a building, it preserves a foundation that students rely on every single day. It protects a community that has shaped who we are and who we are becoming. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I hope you consider how essential it is, this location is, to hundreds of families like mine. Thank you for your time and the work you do to continually support our community.
Thank you, Taylor. Our next speaker is Leon Anheuser.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Brook Street will experience approximately 1,000 cars per day, five days a week increase in traffic concentrated in a narrow time on two lanes, morning and afternoon. Even now, making a left-hand turn from Hall Lake, Dogwood, or Amelia, Camellia, Boobonit, Azalea is nerve-wracking. You have to have a heavy foot to fit into those long streams of cars. The traffic, that's a result of the traffic lights on Sixth and Highway 90, cut through traffic on two lanes. cut through traffic on two lanes. Adding 1,000 more cars per day on a two-lane road is something residents of Hall Lake, Bellknap, and Brookside subdivisions find as unconscionable burden on their safety. If you vote for this school, you must also commit to an additional merged lane on the west side of Brook Street as a minimum for our safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leon. Our next speaker is John Lucy.
First thing I would like to say is I agree with everything Leon said. I live in Hall Lake, and every day try to get on Brook Street. And the way the city has the lights timed, it's very challenging to turn left out of our neighborhood. And the other comment is that if Fort Bend Independent School District was building a street, a building, a school there, you guys would be putting in a four-lane street. Brook Street is in pretty sad shape. I think it's the only asphalt-covered street in the city of Sugar Land. And I think what happened was that originally it was a two-lane concrete street, and then it was put asphalt over it. And the left-turn lanes are starting to fail because of the fact there's no underground support for those lanes. And when you put the school in with additional traffic, it's really going to be very difficult for us, the people that live in Hall Lake and the other two subdivisions there. So I think you guys, the City Council, need to start thinking about how to maybe put another light or maybe put some stop signs at Gunther. The light was broken today, and y'all had a stop sign right there. Everybody had to stop. There are other things you can do. And yes, it's going to cost the city some money. But, you know, we use this street to get around. And I would hopefully appreciate that you would take this into consideration about the traffic and the increase in the traffic and the way you have the lights timed at Highway 6 and Highway 98. And Brook Street's starting to fail is starting to remind me of the reason I left Houston when I retired, because most of the roads here are in good shape. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Maggie Johnson. She's also speaking on Agenda Item 9B.
Hello, my name is Maggie Johnson, and I live on 311 Brook Street. I'm nine years old, and I'm a fourth-grade student at Logos Prep. I like Logos because of the community. The students and teachers are very nice, and there are lots of events so you can get to know people. I think the new school should be built because Kinder through Six will all be together instead of split into different campuses. Another reason I think it should be built is teachers will be able to decorate their classrooms instead of sharing the building. It would also be safer because it is on a safe neighborhood, and the security from all the campuses will be there. Please vote to allow us to build our school on Brook Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Our next speaker is Dean Herbaczek, who's speaking on Item Agenda 8A.
Mayor, Councilmember. It's a little strange being on this side of the podium, so a little bit unusual. My name's Dean Herbaczek. I'm a resident here in the city of Sugar Land. I'm not speaking as a judge today, just as a citizen. Over the last several months, I've had conversations with Commissioner Myers, and he discussed with me some of the county's hopes for DuHausseck Park. I happen to have served as mayor during the time period. Ms. DuHausseck donated approximately 50 acres to the city of Sugar Land, and my goal here this evening is to really share some of her wishes that we sat and discussed during that time period. I recall her telling me how her and her husband bought most of the property back in 1951. Over the next few years, they ended up acquiring some additional land, and somewhere in the 1950s, they ended up building their home there. And I recall back when the city ended up acquiring it. We went and toured the property, and if you wondered what a 1950s home looked like, you would have seen it. But it was very, very nice, very well-kept. Her and her husband Walter had no children. She discussed, and I remember her just kind of pointing around her neighborhood or her home, that neighborhoods were being built all around her home. And back when they bought the property, if you can imagine, in the 1950s, she was out in the middle of nowhere. And her focus was that the children in the surrounding neighborhoods, they need a place to play. They need a place to run, to get out, to have some space versus living in a secluded neighborhood, per se. She talked about she loved her home, and that was one of the things I know she wanted to make sure that remained. And probably her second love on the site were her pecan trees. She loved her pecan trees, and I know that was something she was very, very interested in. And back then, we discussed, because she had some options, but she trusted the city to make sure that the property, I want you to term would be developed, but would be improved and would be made available for the neighbors and for the community. And I think here is a unique opportunity with the county willing to step up, pick up the big tab on it, and being able to make the improvements on the property so the neighbors, the community could enjoy the property that her and her husband loved for so many years. And the fact that it's out there for 25 years, pretty much being dormant, is probably a little sad. But I know Ms. DuHausseck would be thrilled to death with the proposed improvements to the property and the fact that the neighborhood, the kids, and the community would be enjoying the property that she and her husband love so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean, for sharing your firsthand conversations with the DuHaussecks. Next is Kevin Edelbrock. He'll be speaking on Agenda Item 9B.
Good evening. I've never wanted Girl Scout cookies more than ever tonight. If you had a table outside, you'd be in a good place. I've coached at Logos Prep for the last six years, and almost three years to the date. Got to stand here with you all as you all made a proclamation for a Day for Sugar Land, Logos Prep, because we won the state championship in football. And it was a really great day for our school, and it was a lot of fun. And it was shortly thereafter that we actually got a lot of momentum for talking about building a school. And we searched, and we searched, and we searched. And all roads really led back to Sugar Land. And there were some other options that were further out. But as we looked at everything, we really went, this is, we want to be here. Sugar Land is home. And having a primary campus there, K through 2, right there at Faith Lutheran, and leasing space from them, it really became clear that this was a central location that just, it made sense. For me, I've been coaching over there for the last six years, right behind the gym. And I got to tell you that the amount of just sacred conversations that happen with kids. I've been coaching in Sugar Land for the last 20 years, from Pee-wee soccer to girl soccer to boys' football now. And I'll tell you, the decisions that are made in that place are, they're significant in their lives, and it's a special place to us. You know, I've driven that road also for the last six years, nearly every day, and have not had any problems. But one of the things I love about this forum is that we can actually have civil discourse and talk about the issues. And if real issues are raised, I think that's a great thing. You know, we raised our kids in Great Wood, went to public schools up through sixth grade, and then we made the decision to switch over to Logos Prep and go to a private school, which was a big decision because whenever you're making the decision of, who am I going to trust with my kids? It's a big decision. And I can tell you, we're in our last and final year at Logos Prep. We've been there for 10 years. And I know that as a City Council, you're always asking one primary question. Is this someone we can trust? And I can tell you that having had three kids go through there, this is an organization, and this is a staff that you can trust. And they're problem solvers, they're good people, and they do things the right way. And they're going to be easy to work with and adjust and make adjustments for the betterment of the city. So thank you so much for your consideration in voting in favor.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next speaker is Isa Mohamed, and she's speaking on Item 8A.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Isa, and I attend Dulles Middle School. I came here today to thank the City Council and share my appreciation for the new pickleball courts in Sugar Land City Park that you approved in May and has now been built. Here are some important things that I notice when I play. The lines on the courts are really clear and bright, which makes it easier for everyone to see, especially when I'm playing with my parents or grandparents. Now, we don't have to argue as much about whether the ball was in or out. Although sometimes, when I play with my dad, I might say it's in when it's really out. Just don't tell him I told you that. And now, there's no more waiting for the court. It's next to the tennis courts. With four new courts, more people can play at the same time. These courts also show kids like me that tax money isn't just numbers. It can turn into places where we can play, have fun, and be with our families. I really appreciate this because now I learned that the city can fund things that aren't just needs, but also things people can enjoy and do to stay healthy. Thank you for choosing to fund the renovation of this park, and please do more projects like these in the future, just like the park in Item 8A. Thank you.
Thank you, Isa. Linda, has anyone else completed a speaker form?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker forms.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Next, Item 7, Consent Agenda. All Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Is there any council member who wishes to pull an item off of consent? Okay, we have a motion by Watley, a second by Miller. Let's vote at this time. And it passes with a 7-0 vote. Next is Item 8, Contracts and Agreements. Item A, Interlocal Agreement with Fort Bend County for DuHausseck Park. Consideration of an action on the agreement between the city of Sugar Land and Fort Bend County for DuHausseck Park. And we have Kimberly Terrell, Inter Director of Communications.
Good evening. I'd also like to say that we have Commissioner, Fort Bend County Commissioner Andy Myers with us here tonight, championing this agreement. So a bit of background, like we've discussed, DuHausseck Park is a ranch property that was donated to us back in 2001. It's located outside of the city limits at the intersection of Boston Old Richmond Road. It's about 50 acres. It has some improvements on it, including restrooms and pavilion that were funded through Sugar Land 4B back in 2009. Also, a corner of it, the part that's across Red Gully, is leased to the Mud District, Fort Bend County Mud 41. And they're operating a neighborhood park in that little corner. So we talked about some of the deed restrictions. That it must operate as a public park. It may function as an active park. And we've talked about the protection of the trees and the house, which is very important to Mrs. DuHausseck. The county proposes an interlocal agreement with the city. They have $10.4 million that was approved through a park bond election. $9.2 million of that will be allocated to DuHausseck and $1.1 million for Gannaway Lake Park. Potential features on this park are, like we said, pickleballs, one of the potential features. Also, sports fields, trails, parking, dog park, pavilions, landscaping, pedestrian bridge, and other amenities. This agreement transfers all of the operations and maintenance to the county from the city. And the master plan that the Parks and Recreation Department has established supports these uses, these recreational uses to support the recreation system. And this county, this park will be open to all residents of the city, as well as the county. The key terms is there is an initial 50-year term with subsequent renewals. As I said, the county is responsible for all of the operations and maintenance utilities. The city will be, it's a lease agreement, so the city will be in charge still of making sure that all of the trust agreements that the, when the DuHaussecks donated the park to the city, there were some agreements there that we had to comply with. The city will make sure that the county still maintains compliance with those agreements. The county will complete a master plan within 12 months, but they already have a proposal from a landscape architect, so they're already looking ahead in this and making sure that we meet the 12-month agreement. And all of the construction will require city approval, and we'll make sure that the historic house and trees are preserved per those restrictions. The park name will remain, DuHausseck Park. The sign will be changed so that there's joint branding with the county and the city. The security will be handled by county sheriff and constables, and they'll coordinate with our police department as necessary. It is in the county and outside of the city, so that's similar to how it's operating now. The city will receive a portion of the revenue if there are any revenue-generating uses on the site, and that we may terminate for breach or noncompliance with those deed restrictions. So just to recap, the county investment supports the long-term park improvements, the park improvements that the DuHaussecks supported and had a vision for. The agreement makes sure that the trees and the house are still in public use and are preserved. And then the city has the oversight still, which reduces the operational burden to the city while also providing for our residents and county residents. So the next steps are to finalize and execute the interlocal agreement with the county, and then the county will execute the agreement at the Commissioner's Court. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Myers, would you like to say a few words?
Very briefly, I want to thank everybody, the mayor, City Council members. This is a great opportunity. You'll have to excuse me, I'm getting over a bout of roncada, so if you'll bear with me a little bit, I appreciate that. This is an important effort, you know, a joint effort between the county and the city to make improvements for the benefit of all our constituents. We're looking forward to this. In fact, we have it on the agenda on Thursday, so we'll need it signed, assuming that you get it passed, so we can get on the agenda, get it signed, and begin moving forward immediately. So we're looking forward to this. And I definitely want to thank the mayor for her efforts in helping get this agreement over the goal line, so to speak. We've been working on it a little bit, several years on it. So it's great to see that we've come to an opportunity to get it approved. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner, for being willing to invest $9.2 million into DuHausseck and also $1.1 into Gannaway Lake. Commissioner Watley. I mean, Commissioner, sorry. Councilmember Watley, I didn't mean to promote you. Sorry, Councilmember Watley.
I was a commissioner. Commissioner Myers, I just want to thank you again for working with us. It's been a long time coming, and I think everybody's going to benefit from your help on this because what you have planned is just fabulous. I was reading Article 5, Master Plan and Improvements. I want to thank you because in this, you are going to be working with our city continuously to improve the park and making sure it's something that we envisioned, that we know the DuHaussecks envisioned. And it's also something you're taking to the public for public input. So anytime we include our residents in a plan to do something like this, we all appreciate that. So thank you so much, and thank you for the $1.1 million. Didn't see that point one, but thank you so much for that. I think the city is also going to benefit from having Gannaway Lakes improved. So with that, I know we may have more discussion, but I do want to make the motion to approve this.
Councilmember Single?
So I think it's a very good proposal, and I would like to thank you, Commissioner Myers, for working with the city. I think the resident of Sugar Land requires more sports facility. And I'm hoping with the design, we can accommodate a multipurpose field which can accommodate soccer and cricket both, because that's something which is missing today in the city. And with that, I would like to thank you for really working together. And I would like to second the motion. to second the motion.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mike?
Mayor, just real quick, this is kind of full circle for me because DuHausseck Park acquisition was my project when I was in the Parks Department 20-plus years ago. And I do, I do want to publicly thank Mayor Herbocic because it was not an easy council decision at the time to bring it in when it wasn't in the city, and his leadership led to that, which we wouldn't be here today. And also, Commissioner Myers has been an unbelievable partner for the city on all things, and so this is just another example, just, we're so thankful for that. We're a better city because of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. So, again, yeah, thank you, Dean, or, yeah, Dean Herbocic, for thank you for all you did when you were mayor for this. And Commissioner, thank you for your willingness to, I should make this investment. This is really great. So, so we have a motion by Watley and a second by Single. Let's vote at this time. Congratulations, thank you.
And I will get it passed Thursday, promise you.
Sounds good, okay. Next item, 8B, contract with RMB Group Incorporated. Consideration of an action on a construction contract with RMB Group Incorporated for the rehabilitation of lift station 48 and installation of 16-inch force main as part of CIP CWW 2301 in the amount of $6,4,810.95. Okay, so Jonathan Brown, Assistant City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm going to follow that up with talk about a lift station, so I apologize ahead of time. Let's jump into it. So, this was recommended in the 2020 wastewater master plan, and we performed a preliminary engineering study in fiscal year 21. Excuse me. The point of this is to enable the lift station to accommodate additional effluent flows from the tailfire development buildout and from lift station 60. So, we went to design in March of 2023. We got our grant to order in May of '25 and the TCEQ permit in the same month, and we completed design June 2025. Extending on this background discussion, we first advertised this project on June 11th and June 18th of 2025, and we received nine bids on July 10th. Council did approve a construction phase contract with Branch Construction Group on, and this is a typo, it was actually August 19th, not 9/19. And the lowest bid was 6.3 million. Branch Construction Group notified the city on September 4th that they could not obtain their performance bond, and so our discussions with our legal counsel advised us to readvertise the bid and let that existing one expire. So, we did. We readvertised on 9/17. Here is a location of the project. Over on the left, there is lift station 48. That's new territory and university. The 16-inch force main is running towards the north wastewater treatment plant over ditch H. The scope of work will be an additional wet well on the site, recoating the existing wet well, valve vault improvements, new pumps and piping, electrical improvements, SCADA connectivity, a standby generator, and brick fencing and a mix of wood fencing on the sides. So, the 16-inch force main is about 5,000 over linear feet long, and that will connect the lift station to the north wastewater treatment plant. We did include an alternative bid for optional brick fencing on the sides in lieu of wood. So, as mentioned, we readvertised September 17th and 24th. We had our non-mandatory pre-bid conference on October 1st, and we got eight bids this time on October 16th, 2025. Here is a summary of those bids, the lowest ranging from 6 million up to 8.8 million. You can see that our engineers' cost estimate in the bottom corner was about 6 million as well. And the lowest responsive bidder was RMB Group Incorporated. Here's a breakdown of our funding needs for this project. We, we did decide to move forward with the additional alternative of brick fencing. So, that's about 6 million in construction costs, a 300,000 contingency, about 50,000 in construction admin, and 15,000 in material testing. So, total needs about 6.4 million. We do have 6.6 in the project, and I do want to note that this will come from our utility funds that will cover the cost of this project. Just for a little reference here, this is a comparison from our original bid to our rebid. You can see that the original was about 6.4. If you add it in the additional, this new bid is at 6 million, so that's a difference of 400,000. For the schedule, we're looking to give notice to proceed in January 2026. It's going to take about 395 days, and so February 27 completion. And it's on city property, and then the rest of the force main will be in the Cedar Point Eastment. So, no sanitary sewer interruptions are expected. If we do need to reach out, we will use door hangers, mailouts, and one-on-one communication. And with that, I'd like to recommend the city council authorize the execution of this contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Single?
Yeah, so my question is, do we have a bid bond in our process? Because in a case like this, when somebody wins the bid and does not perform the work, there should be some penalty on them.
Sure.
So, do we have a bid bond?
That's a good question. We, we did get a bid bond. We get bid bonds on all of our projects. In this case, because there was a less response from the lowest bidder this time, it was difficult from my discussions with our legal counsel, it was difficult to prove that we were damaged in any way. So, we opted to not pursue a claim on the bid bond.
Okay, because typically, bid bond is irrespective of damage, we should be able to call for that bond because they did not perform. But I guess, you know, that's possibly, you would have considered that.
Meredith?
We would only call a bid bond if the second bid came in higher. Because we're able to save, we would not call up the bid bond.
Okay, thank you. And since it's in my district, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Any further discussion, my council? Okay, so we have a motion by Single and a second by Miller. Let's vote at this time. And it passes 7-0. Thank you, Jonathan. Next item is item nine, ordinances and resolutions. We have five items under consideration. Item A, consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Resolution Number 2538, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, adopting a city council policy for a Great Homes Update Economic Development Program and repealing Resolution Number 2444. And we have Anna Rodriguez, Community Development Coordinator.
Hello, everybody. Okay, so today I'm going to be going over a proposal for a Great Homes incentive expansion. So, here we have the life of the city. Now, as we've never seen this chart before, one of the metrics for residential property in order to be on the path of redevelopment is to make sure that the housing is being renovated, and the Great Homes program's main function is to assist people into making improvements to their homes. And along with the strategic plan, fostering sensitive redevelopment focuses on creating an environment that is geared towards the redevelopment, and residential is included as well. And it's very important for us to make sure that we're encouraging projects that may not be financially feasible by providing incentives that will help implement the changes that we want to see in our community and drive that development. So, we also think about the forward-looking housing strategy as well, which is another one of our objectives. And in order to diversify our housing and give people the opportunity, we want to make sure that we're meeting those changing needs. Okay, so today, we're going to have a little overview of the Great Homes Update program and give you a little recap of the past years, and we're going to go over an opportunity analysis, review some case studies, and also move to look at recommendations. Now, in the last three years, we have seen improvements done at 303 homes, and this has been 5.3 million in improvements, and 791,000 of those homes received reimbursements in that amount. And the average reimbursement is about 2.6 thousand. Now, in year 2023, it was a five-to-one ratio, 2024, a seven-to-one, and in 2025, an eight-to-one. So, in the average, throughout the last three years of our home, we've, we have an average return of investment of seven-to-one, and that means that $7 of private investment for every $1 of public funds invested. And here, you'll see some of the transformative changes that we've seen with the Great Homes Now, the current Great Homes Update program is a reimbursement-based incentive program, and this helps offer homeowners the opportunity to improve their home, make repairs, and enhance the exterior of their homes as well. And this helps to preserve and protect the community and enhance their homes as well. Now, the current criteria has two categories, which is 10% and 25%. There's a minimum project cost of 8,000 for the 10% bracket and the maximum reimbursement of 10,000. Now, both of these categories require insurance for their homeowners, and the eligible value is based off of the median value of the home. And so, that is something that changes every fiscal year since we use Fort Bend CAD's current averages for the market value. And there is also a requirement for, for you to qualify for the 25%. Your home has to be built in 1993 or earlier because that's the median value. And the homeowners have to be the applicants to apply for the program. Now, we have had some amendments in the last few years. So, we did an amendment in 2024 to update the reimbursement rules to expand the project options. So, we started to include other items that were not previously included, and we also made some adjustments to the percentages such as, like windows went to 50% since we saw that was a high cost and wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity and we were spending our money on all types of projects and not solely one. And then, we also did an amendment after Beryl since we saw a need for assistance after the disaster, and so this amendment helped to allow for homeowners to do projects that they needed, that were more flexible, and they received a standard 25% reimbursement. Now, in year one, two, and three, here are all the projects that we saw, and again, those 303 projects in those three years with a 5.3 billion investment. So, we're going to go over the opportunities. So, we're going to look at the bottom 3% of homes in Sugar Land. Now, we're looking at the, this is based off of the property value. So, there's approximately 1,050 homes in Sugar Land that represent this bottom 3%. And these homes are primarily in Mayfield Park, Covington Woods, Barrington Place, Chimney Stone, Brookside Belknap, Ragus Lakes, and a few more. But here in this map, you can see the yellow represents that bottom 3%. Now, these homes are, on average, 20 years older than the average home in Sugar Land, so mostly around the 1970s, and that leaves them, it gives them more room for opportunity or need to make improvements or repairs in order to be competitive in, in this environment. But they do still do a great job at maintaining their homes, and code enforcement does a great job at making sure that our communities look really nice. Now, why focus on these lower-value homes? So, there's approximately 35,000 single-family homes in Sugar Land, and these homes, the homes that are in the bottom 3% are valued under generally 232,000. And so, these homes are the ones that have the greatest need for repairs, more likely to be impacted by code violations, and have a lower participation rate in Sugar Land's Great Homes program. They might be more cost-burdened or may not be able to meet the current program requirements. Now, here you can see a map of the code violations that are in the bottom 3%, and this accounts for 5% of code violations, and they're mostly construction without a permit, exterior wall repairs, electrical need good repair, which could be in like fascia siding and roofing, trees, and exterior surfaces. And these are projects that the Great Homes Update program could assist homeowners in making those repairs or renovations. Now, some of the feedback that we receive from the neighborhoods are that they struggle to meet the program requirements as they are. They might have homes that are paid off or simply cannot have homeowner's insurance due to the affordability. And they also, you know, stated that they had a hard time meeting that $4,000 minimum requirement, and so they can't meet that threshold, so they cannot apply. There's also unique housing living situations where their homeowner might be deceased, or it might be a generational home, and ownership might be unclear. So, here is the current participation of Great Homes. These are all of the projects throughout the city, and it was just a nice visual so you can see that there's a lot of participation in Great Homes, just not in these areas. There's only been eight homes who have applied for Great Homes within that 3% bracket. So, this is a zoomed-in view where you can see where those eight homes are, and on average, they have spent 13,000 on their improvements, and their projects have been driveways, garage door, landscaping, siding, and those are some of the most popular improvements that we've seen in that, those, those projects. And now, we're going to look at some of the case studies. So, when looking for programs that have similar offerings, we did find a few that had a 50% rebate or re-investment. And so, the city of Garland was one. They have the home improvement incentive rebate. They offer, again, up to $10,000, which is our maximum as well. Their appraised value cannot exceed 300,000, and the dwellings have to be at least 30 years old. Their target was homes that are lower value and homes that are older as well. Now, the city of Lewisville offers a 50% cash rebate up to $5,000, and their target was low to moderate income, homeowner 62 or older, disabled, or projects that would repair code violations, and their minimum project rebate is $250. Now, Grand Prairie has the building blocks program. They also offer a 50% rebate up to $10,000, and their program is geared more towards the age of the home. So, depending on the age of the home is how they would determine what type of rebate you would get. Now, for our recommendations, we would like to propose a 50% reimbursement incentive, and this would be for the homes that are in the bottom 3%. This would lower the minimum project cost to $500 and increase the reimbursement to that 50% of the eligible costs. Some items that we've included to simplify eligibility is to include heirs, and that would be, you know, debt certificates or affidavits of heirship, things that would determine who the heir is and whether or not they have the authority to make changes to the home. We also are giving the option to waive homeowner's insurance and including some language that would waive the city of any liability. So, here's an updated table showing the different categories. So, we still have the 10%, the 25%, but we're proposing this 50%. This lowers, again, the minimum project cost, maintains the same maximum reimbursement, insurance is not required, and the home has to be valued at the bottom 3%. It can be built in any year, and the owner can apply as well as any heirs. Now, whenever we keep this in mind, we want to make sure that this is feasible within our budget. So, we anticipate maybe 25 new applications, and if they stay within the average of the projects that we've seen, we should still be able to operate within our budget of 200,000 for FY '26. So, this is very important to us because a strong city begins with supporting the homes that are most in need. Now, the bottom 3% of the homes face the highest barriers and have the lowest participation. So, this would assist the homeless thrive, make improvements, and make sure that Great Homes is accessible to all homeowners in our city and lead to more resilient neighborhoods. Now, our next steps. For Great Homes FY '26, we would, ideally... For Great Homes FY '26, we would ideally announce this expansion and then incorporate the changes to our marketing strategy and our outreach because Great Homes opens on January 1st. So, we are ready to get the ball rolling. So, staff recommends that the City Council approve Resolution 25-38 to adopt the Great Homes Update Economic Development Program and repeal Resolution Number 24-44.
Councilwoman Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor. Anna, do I understand correctly that the reimbursements do not come out of our property taxes, but they actually come from sales taxes, much of which we collect from nonresidents?
So, the Great Homes Program comes from the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Single?
I have a question on the participation rate. You said that there were lower participation for the bottom 3%.
Yes.
But from the number you gave, which is eight out of 295, is almost 3%, which would indicate that the participation rate is almost same for, because 3% overall, because when you say for bottom 3%, it's 3%.
Yeah. Whenever I say that they're the lowest participation, is that the 3% for homes that are most in need and most impacted by code violations have the highest barriers? They don't have the same opportunity. And whenever we look at that map, it's very evident that Great Homes has a lot of activity throughout the city, just not in these areas where there might be the most need.
Councilmember Vondahar?
Anna, quick question. I may have the number wrong, but I think you said that you have a budget of $200,000. Is the program set up such that when you reach that, you cut it off?
Yes. So, we only accept applications up to that approved amount. Of course, we do have times whenever all of these projects don't get completed, and we generally will roll over those funds to the next year if we can.
Okay. Just want to make sure we don't go over budget. So, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Watley?
Thank you, Mayor. Anna, I want to thank you for this because we've been talking about it. And I think the demographic or the homes that you're trying to reach are very important to us because they are the ones that have been missed, and that's feedback generated. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. So, whenever we have conversations with a lot of people, like not only do we hear, "Oh, I wish we had that in my city," or we've also received applicants who didn't have homeowner's insurance, but also with our communication with code enforcement, who's out in the field a lot and has a lot of conversations with the homeowners, they also agree that a lot of the, you know, barriers are the expenses and the unique unclear homeownership status. So, that's what we gear to try to make sure that everybody has that opportunity to make those improvements and make sure that the whole city is thriving, not just pockets of it.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Follow-up?
And one thing I want to ask you is, I know that you've gotten feedback from these, this group generally, but how do we reach out to them to let them know we're going to get this rolling? Because I don't want them to miss out on this opportunity.
Well, I know we're going to launch this on all of our socials if you guys approve it, but also, we have a really great, you know, relationship with a lot of the HOAs, and community engagement is a great help in getting the word out there. So, we'll make sure that we can get that information to them and also make sure that we're providing code enforcement and neighborhood services with the information, and they give us every opportunity that they can to present to, you know, the neighborhoods and the rental program as well, so make sure that we're reaching everybody that we can.
Thank you. I think this is going to greatly help my district a lot. District One is going to be grateful. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Bettscher?
Thank you, Mayor. Anna, a couple of questions on the changes to the ownership requirements. So, can you cover what the current ownerships are today for the property ownership and then how this proposed changes impacts that?
Yeah. So, we discussed with legal like what the best options would be, and right now, it's only owners. We've seen some cases where somebody has just purchased a property, so they'll submit their documentation since CAD takes a second to update. But this would include, you know, submitting death certificates, any legal documentation that they have that declares them as an heir, and that's what we would use to move forward to allow them to complete an application and enter into agreement with them.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
Is the intent for this to be eligible to only the homeowners that are living in the property, or if somebody owns a second home or third home as a rental, are they eligible for this program as well?
People who rent their home or don't occupy their home are still eligible. There's never been anything in the policy to prohibit rentals from applying, and we've never had, I don't think, a homeowner who's applied who just has a vacant home. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. And then, one more follow-up.
Follow-up?
The 3%, lower 3% which we're targeting, can you define what that is today based on the median household?
Yeah. I think it was about 231,000 was where that cutoff was. So, once we start updating the application process, we'll make sure we have those amounts, especially in like our lookup tool. Whenever people go in to look up what type of bracket they fall into, we'll make sure to make those changes so that they can easily see where they would fall in the incentives. But that was the most recent data, and we do update that at the beginning of every fiscal year. And should be as close to I can get to the actual number.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback on Councilmember Watley, as this will also benefit folks who live in District Three, I'd like to second this motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Single?
I just want to confirm for the homes which are not in 3%, the previous scheme will still remain, which is 25%.
Yeah. They can still apply for either the 10% or the 25%, just depending on which criteria they're eligible for.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bettscher, follow-up?
And then, the last point of the motion was to strike out the last motion, correct? What changes is that bringing forth?
It's just adopting the new policy that replaces that one. So, it just, the new one just incorporates the changes that we proposed.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay. We have a motion by Watley, a second by Jacobson. Let's vote at this time, please. And motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Anna. Next item is Item 9B, Second Consideration, Consideration of and Action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2380, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, granting a conditional use permit for private school, Logos Preparatory Academy, located at 800 Brook Street and 802 Brook Street, within a business office VO zoning district. And we have Jessica Echols, Senior Planner.
Good evening. Since this conditional use permit is back for second consideration, I was just going to give an overview of the item. So, during the staff presentation, there will be a quick overview of the request as well as a recap of the public hearing that was held at the September 2nd City Council meeting, and then providing updates since that public hearing. Before the second reading of Ordinance Number 2380, staff and the applicant will be available to answer any questions. So, Logos Preparatory Academy has requested this conditional use permit in order to construct a new campus on approximately 23-acre site west of Brook Street. The property is owned Business Office District, which is required for the, conditional use permit is required for the establishment of a private school. Logos is in the, under contract with Faith Lutheran Church and The Bridge to purchase that land. And currently, Logos is operating across two campuses. Their kindergarten to second grade students are already at Brook Street at Faith Lutheran, and then the rest of their students are at Shere Creek Baptist. And this conditional use permit would allow for the construction of Phase 1 of their new campus, which would include a three-story, approximately 60,000-square-foot academic building, a one-story, approximately 8,000 cafeteria and outdoor pavilion, a multipurpose playfield, surface parking, detention pond, and then the renovation, interior renovation of the existing gym building, which is located right here on the site. So, across both campuses, the current enrollment is 623 students, and the future enrollment is projected to increase to 976 students with the new campus. That's what the building occupancy would allow for. However, not all students will be on campus at one time. They operate under a university curriculum model, and so, their academic schedule is split between Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes and Tuesday, Thursday classes. And the maximum attendance onsite is supposed to be 536 students on those Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes. Access to the new campus will be provided via a new primary access easement that connects to Brook Street, which is identified as a collector roadway. And the minimum parking requirement, which is established through a condition in the ordinance, will be met through onsite parking as well as shared parking agreements with both Faith Lutheran Church and The Bridge. So, again, the public hearing was held at that September 2nd City Council meeting. A total of 10 speakers spoke during that public hearing, with six being in support and four being in opposition. Ahead of the meeting, we received 52 comment letters and 18 emails in support of the requests and only one comment letter in opposition. The primary concerns of those in opposition, as we heard again tonight, were the existing traffic conditions on Brook Street, and then with the new school traffic, concerns from residents of being able to exit their neighborhood, as well as students parking in the adjacent neighborhood. Following the public hearing, council asked several questions of staff and the applicant, particularly on student parking. There's discussion on alternative site layouts, questions regarding school speed zones on Brook Street, and then if there were any future plans for the widening of Brook Street. Following that, council provided direction to staff to evaluate traffic impacts if Faith Lutheran's driveway that was previously proposed to be removed was kept open. And following that, the council action, council voted unanimously to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2380 with the condition that the detention pond be relocated. Since that public hearing, the detention pond has been relocated on the site plan, which is Exhibit A of the ordinance, and on the traffic circulation plan, which is Exhibit B. The TIA has also been updated, reviewed, and concurred with. It evaluated if that Faith Lutheran Church parking lot driveway on Brook Street remained open, what the traffic impacts would be, and ultimately included a recommendation that the driveway remain closed during school drop-off and pickup times in order to maintain that onsite circulation that was previously evaluated and shown on the traffic circulation plan. And since then, an additional exhibit and condition have been added to Ordinance Number 2380, which I will go over in just a moment. So, this was the previous site plan that was under consideration at that September 2nd meeting. You'll see that the detention pond was located north of the cafeteria and pavilion, and that there were two driveways proposed to be closed, one on the northern side of the bridge property, and then this driveway that connected to the Faith Lutheran parking lot. On the revised site plan that has been attached to the updated ordinance, you will see that the detention pond has been relocated from this location to the west of this drainage easement. And then, you'll also see that the driveway is now open for that Faith Lutheran parking lot. This is the previous circulation plan. Again, you'll see in this close-up, the two driveways proposed to be closed, and the traffic circulation entered on this primary access easement and circulated through the Faith Lutheran parking lot and then down to the drop-off and pickup and back out. And on this revised circulation plan, you'll note that the driveway is now shown open. However, there is a note that states that this driveway will remain closed during those morning pickup or drop-off and afternoon pickup times, and that a staff or personnel of the school will be stationed at that driveway to only allow for the Faith Lutheran Church staff to access it. It should be noted that the onsite circulation has not changed at all. You'll still see it in those blue arrows. Parents will enter here during the morning drop-off. They will most likely just enter and drop off. But during those afternoon pickup times, because the onsite stacking is supposed to be longer, they will most likely be directed to circulate through this Faith Lutheran parking lot in order to avoid spilling out onto Brook Street. And here is the additional exhibit, Exhibit C, that has been added to the ordinance. This is a detail that was reviewed during the traffic impact analysis revision and has since been added to the ordinance. You'll see that a sign is proposed to be erected at this driveway that says that it's for church staff only. There are cones shown here, and there is a note that the school staff or personnel will be stationed at this driveway to maintain traffic flow and only allow in the Faith Lutheran staff. These are the three conditions that were reviewed during that last meeting. The only thing that has changed with these three conditions is the second condition. You'll see that the number of maximum students has dropped from 596 to 536. That's because the applicant has provided new numbers, and the maximum number of students expected during those Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes is 536, not 596. And then, this is the additional condition that has been added in order to align with that revised TIA and as well as to address some of those traffic concerns that have been raised. So, the condition states that vehicular traffic must comply with the traffic circulation plan attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Staff members or personnel of the private school must be in place at the Faith Lutheran Church driveway as indicated on Exhibit C, and stationed in the Bridge parking lot during the morning and afternoon student pickup and drop-off times to direct vehicular traffic. And with that, staff and the commission have recommended approval of Ordinance Number 2380, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Watley?
That was fast. Thank you. Jessica, thank you so much for this presentation again, and I want to thank the neighborhood. I know only a few of you are here tonight, but Leon and everybody you represent and the church, our logos, because you guys have been going back and forth in meetings, I know, between all of these council meetings. So, thank you for your input. Thank you for working together. It's much easier when you do that out there than making us do it here. So, what you're bringing us tonight, we're seeing a lot of changes that came as a result of your meetings and working together. So, thank you so much. I think the thing that we're still looking at that we heard about tonight, and I'm going to call Robert Wilson up here to talk about it, you knew I was, we heard about the light timing, and we heard about Brook Street, the failure of Brook Street, and how that's going. And while I don't know if that's totally relevant to the school, because in reality, we could put a hotel there, we could put all kinds of things there, it would still generate the traffic. So, it's not that this school is generating the traffic. I think the fact is that we have concerns about Brook Street as a whole, and I would like you to address that, keeping in mind, we're not talking about logos as much as we're talking about the concerns of Brook Street.
Absolutely. So, like you said, it's more of an overall traffic piece. So, the way the roads are designed, we look at what's the maximum traffic that that road's going to put through in a one-hour period? And ultimately, the road gets designed to that. Logos is not in that timeframe that we would look at typically of that 5:00 PM rush hour traffic. Their rush, or their rush hour, if you will, their peak hour traffic is really occurring in that mid-afternoon school pickup, school drop-off times. So, it's not necessarily adding to and making the traffic worse. It's putting it in a different time spot that is occurring. But for existing traffic, the city does own five traffic cameras that were actually recently put on the news, but we use those to evaluate whether or not traffic improvements are needed, what the existing traffic conditions are, and then be able to study how do we make traffic better in the city. So, that's something that we can definitely do on Brook Street for those residents.
Follow-up?
Great. It's good to know that we are going to be looking at this and keeping an eye on it for traffic problems and the road construction problems, if there should be any, because I know at some point, there will be some regardless of the school there. But in the last traffic analysis that we redid, or we did, did we have an impact of 1,000 cars? I mean, what were we looking at? Can you address that?
So, in total, there's about 600 cars in that TIA per day. In a texted-style roadway, which Brook Street was originally constructed by a texted, that road is designed for about 1,700 cars per hour, which is about 25,000 cars a day. We're talking 600 cars a day on a road that has about 7,000 cars right now per day.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody who took the time to talk to me, to meet with me, and work on this, and I appreciate all your help. I would like to make a motion to approve. Gosh, it's been a busy night in District One. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Councilmember Single?
So, I want to thank the planning department, Jessica, and your team, because from the earlier version which we saw, there have been lots of improvement based on the feedback from the public. So, I think overall, I heard a lot of good things about the Logos School from my constituents also, so I would be supportive of the project. One thing I would like to request, and which is again, as you said, not related to Logos, is the two of the points which are mentioned. One is the repair of the Brook Street where needed, and second is the longer turning lanes where possible. If these two can be looked into in parallel to this ongoing approval, I think that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. We have a motion by Watley and a second by Vondahar. Let's vote at this time. Okay, and it passes 7-0. Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have items 9C and 9D. These two items will be presented together in a single presentation. However, the council will take separate action on each item. After the presentation, we will return to item 9C for action. So 9C, first consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2396, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, amending the code of ordinances by amending provisions in Chapter 5 related to stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Item 9D, first consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance 2397, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, amending Chapter 4 of the Land Development Code by amending sign regulations related to political signs. And we have Nicole Guavera, Assistant Director of Neighborhood Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much. So as you mentioned, tonight, we're going to be covering ordinance number 2397, which has to do with political signage, and ordinance 2396, which has to do with parking. Just as a reminder, we did workshop these items on our November 4th council meeting. So our first ordinance regarding political signage, just again, just to reiterate, no changes from the workshop. We are going to define a type 1 and a type 2 political sign, with a type 2 sign being for a specific candidate or a measure on an upcoming election. A type 1 will just be general political messaging. So for a type 2, we'll establish the timeframe in which it's allowed to be placed out on private property, which is 90 days before an election, and then it has to be removed within five days after the election. And again, at that point, if it's out of compliance with our ordinances, then we'll, as code enforcement, go out and issue a notice violation requiring that that signage be removed. And then there'll be extensions if there's a candidate who is in a runoff. And with parking, again, like we discussed during our workshop, we're speaking about commercial vehicles on private property. This is actually a photo that I took just last week of a commercial center on New Territory at 99. So this ordinance would be making it unlawful for the person to park overnight from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We are defining what a commercial motor vehicle is, so three axles, 15-person-plus transportation vehicle, providing an exemption for those businesses that provide sleeping accommodations. So going back to the 15-person-plus transportation vehicle, if you're having a bus full of kids travel back and forth and they're staying at a hotel. So we're building in some exemptions for them. Also, building in a defense to prosecution for the property owner, because this ordinance would target both the property owner and the operator of the motor vehicle. So for the property owner, if they place signage and they're actively enforcing this ordinance, then they would not be held liable for that violation. And we would have code enforcement going out and just making sure that that signage is there, that they're actively enforcing it, and then we'll address that with the property owner if necessary. So after we got to working on that particular ordinance, EV charging stations also came up. As a city, we are installing some EV charging locations at our airport, so we're having nine DCFC spaces there and seven Level 2 spaces at the IPRC. So there was a concern. This is covered parking, prime space covered parking. So we wanted to make sure that if someone is going to be utilizing those spaces, they're actually utilizing them for the purpose that they're being installed. So if a vehicle is there to actively charge, that's no problem, but if they are not actively charging, then that would be a violation of our ordinances and we could cite them for that. And we did take into account the charging speeds. So at the IPRC, they're Level 2, so they're a little bit slower, and that would allow for sufficient time for someone to go to a class and then come back in there, not be any problem with compliance with the ordinance. So we are recommending approval of ordinances 2396 and 2397 with a second reading to occur during an upcoming city council meeting. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Nicole? Councilmember Betts?
So if we're getting into the specifics of the parking changes, so what are the teeth of this actual changes? Is this enforced by the property owner or is this looking to be enforced by the city itself?
Which portion of the parking? Are you speaking about the commercial vehicles?
Maybe I jumped ahead, yeah, but commercial vehicles and parking overnight or even parking in an EV charging station, like what is the remedy?
So for both cases, code enforcement can issue a citation, which they would have to deal with with municipal court. That would be the enforcement mechanism to cite that, either the commercial vehicle owner at, you know, that's parked improperly. If we're talking about the EV charging stations, then either code enforcement would, or the ordinance also empowers airport staff to address that at the airport itself.
Okay, so the only enforcement would be the city would basically fine them and there'd be no towing by the city. That would be handled by the private property owner, correct?
Towing is a much more complicated, a much more complicated issue that we're still looking at right now, but it's not part of this particular ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, looking for a motion on item 9C, ordinance number 2396. Okay, a motion by Miller, a second by Single. Let's vote at this time. Next, we have item 9D, which is ordinance 2397. Okay, we've got a motion by Vandahar. Do we have, who was the second from? Okay, second by Single. Let's vote at this time. Next is item 9E. Consider, oh, thank you, Nicole. Anyway, next is item 9E, consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Resolution Number 2551, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, casting votes for the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for the 2026 to 2029 term of office. We have Jing Zhao, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Resolution 2551 is to casting the city's vote for the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for the 2025 election. I'll be really brief. So the role for Board of Director for any central appraisal district is very similar to a city council for a city government. So they hiring chief appraiser, adopting budget, set up policy, et cetera. They don't involve the day-to-day operation of the district. There are nine members on the board. Three members are elected by, through general election. These three members serve a staggered four-year term that begins on January 1st of every other odd years. And the five members are appointed by texting units within a district. Those five members serve also staggered four-year terms, begin on January 1st of every other even-numbered years. And the ninth member is a non-voting member that are served by tax accessor. So you may ask, then, it sounds like we do the election every other year. Why we been doing this election for the past three years every year? That is because in 2023, the Texas Legislature has expanded the board from six members to nine members. In addition to adding three at-large members through general election, all the members' terms have been extended from two years to staggered four years. That's why we have been going through this transitioning period, say this way. So on this table, the blue bar, this election is what we're doing tonight. So we're electing two members for a four-year term for 2026 to 2029. So after this election, the transition will be completed. So the next election will be two years later, in December 2027. Here are the nine members who are serving currently on the board. The two names with abstract, they were nominated by City of Sugar Land last year, and they are serving three-year terms from 2025 to 2027. The two pink-orange highlight, two seats are subject to election, and the two current board members have been nominated. Their names are on the ballot this year. This is the ballot we received from the chief appraiser late October. The city has 54, entitled 54 votes. So what we need to do tonight is to allocate these 54 votes between the two candidates. So Resolution 2551 basically is just casting the votes, our votes. So the staff recommends the city council to approve 2551 to cast the City of Sugar Land 54 votes between the two candidates. And after the approval, the resolution and the ballot will be sent to the chief appraiser before December 15th. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Betts?
So for this position, how many people are up for the election? There's only two people?
The two people being nominated on the ballot. So each texting unit should nominate what they want to nominate. That happens in October. So the City of Sugar Land at the time, we agree with what we briefed the finance audit committee. So we agree with the two existing members or current members on the board, which was suggested by the Fort Bend County Chief Appraiser. So they are, the two names happened also, they are on the ballot.
Right, so these are our two nominees. But are they competing against other nominees from other entities? Or are these the only two people?
Those are the two people we know. I'm not aware of, there might be other candidates that we could ask if you.
No, no, I'm just curious. I mean, at this point, there's two vacancies, there's two people that got the spot, right?
Yes. We got the information from the chief appraiser. Usually, we just got a ballot. This is the name we received on the ballot. So I'm sorry, I don't have any additional information on that.
Okay, just trying to understand the mechanisms, that's all.
I make a motion to cast 27 votes for Pamela Gaskin and 27 votes for Paul Stamanis Jr. Do you have a follow-up question? Okay, yeah, please comment, yes.
Because originally, I understood that only these two people are standing for this position, but your last comment saying there may be other candidates make me a little bit question that why don't we have at least all the candidates' names when we nominated these two?
I wish out.
The ABIC should be sending us the full list of candidates when asking for a vote.
The chief appraiser makes the decision for whose name will be listed on the ballot. For that, I don't know the detail, but we receive this ballot to vote for, we don't have other candidates. So what is the additional process of that?
No, but normally, when you receive a ballot, it should be all candidates, whether nominated, appointed.
I only have two years or three years' experience with this, and I looked back. Every time is we got, if we have five seats open for election, we got ballot for five numbers, five names on the ballot for the five seats. I have not seen in the past the document that.
Seems more like a communist system than you're nominated only for these. That's okay.
Okay, yeah, these are the only two candidates that we're aware of. So anyway, a motion by me, a second by Miller. Let's vote at this time. Thank you, Jing. Item 10, city council and city manager reports. We'll start with you, Councilmember Betts.
All right, well, this last week was Thanksgiving, so we got to spend time with the family. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody in the audience. Also, let's see what we got here. Fort Bend Business Coalition and the state legislators had an update, and our state legislators in Fort Bend County, we have four of them, and the state senators also given up on the legislative accomplishments they had over the last session, and much of our city council and staff were represented.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended and also sponsored the Arc of Fort Bend Western Dance.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandahar?
I attended the police and fire extravaganza at Tired Brewing. And just in case anybody cares, I spent Thanksgiving in Wyoming and had some snow.
Oh, great, thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Just a lot of time with family, and I found out I was the best sous chef ever.
That's great, thank you. Councilmember Single?
Yeah, I was traveling part of the time, but I attended the meeting on New Territory Pedestrian Safety yesterday, and today we attended the food donation drive at the Ismaili Zamayt Khana, which was very well attended by the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Watley?
Okay, I was with Rob, I was with you, Stuart, I was with Jim, I was with you, and I was with our mayor at the Jingle Tree Fashion Show. That's it. And I did have Thanksgiving.
Okay, great. So anyway, I hosted Houston Methodist at Smart Financial. I met with leaders from the Houston area of Realtors and also met with Rick Guerra, who is the HGAC Government Relations Manager. And we also got a new puppy, so, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City offices will be closed tomorrow from 10:30 to 1:30, so we can celebrate our employees at the annual employee banquet, which is always just a lot of fun and really our employees work so hard all year for the public and it's our turn to celebrate them and also have the public come out to join us this Friday, December 5th, from 5 to 8 for the tree lighting ceremony. We have a lot of fun things planned there. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Next is item 11, closed executive session. Item A, closed executive session as authorized by Chapter 551, Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. For the purpose of deliberation regarding the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, that will be Jennifer Alexander, Business Development Manager, Alba Penate Johnson, Assistant Director of Economic Development. Item B, closed executive session as authorized by Chapter 551, Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, for the purpose of discussion with respect to the Municipal Court Judge Annual Performance Evaluation, that's by me. Item C, closed executive session as authorized by Chapter 551, Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, for the purpose of discussion with respect to the City Manager Annual Performance Evaluation, also by me. Then we will now adjourn the regular meeting and go into the closed executive session. Thank you.